Okay, good evening. I'm gonna open up the meeting. It says, uh, special meeting of the Stratton School Board for a residency hearing for the Bartfeld family. The time now is 5:32. In person, we have Lorraine Weeks Newell, who is our residency coordinator, Candy Bernard, who is a town, town lister, but she's, I think she's here in a, I don't, I don't think she's here as a, you're just a Stratton person tonight.
I'm here just to open that door.
Oh, she's here to do us a favor. Um, Devin Markucci, we have both members of the Bartfeld family. We have, and I'm sorry, I forgot your first name. Ben and Nicole Bartfeld. Okay. And Kelly De La Laskin and myself. And on Zoom is, I think I already said that. So did I? Say it. Okay. It's a, I did? Okay. Our superintendent, our attorney and Allison. So, typically what we do here is I'm gonna turn the computer around and then, the attorney will explain to us basically how the process goes down and then, um, and, and he'll go through all of that with us now. So I'll just turn that around for you. Okay, so give this over this way. Superintendent and Attorney. All right, Attorney McDermott, the floor is yours, sir.
Hi, my name is Mark McDermott. I work for the law firm of Lewin, Blackman and Menitzky, here to help the board, kinda guide them through the process this evening. Uh, and I'm just gonna give you a short rundown of what this meeting looks like tonight. As, as you probably guessed, we're here for residency hearing. And it's kinda like a hearing. So it, it, it looks a little quasi judicial. The administration will explain their determination upfront. Bob and Lorraine will have a chance to explain, how they came to their decision and inform you what that decision was. And then the board will have a chance to ask questions of the administration. Secondly, the family will get a chance to, uh, present their, uh, side of the issue and the board will once again have a chance to question the family, uh, to clear up any, um, questions that they might have. And at the end of that, the board goes into what's called a deliberative session. They'll be by themselves. Uh, they'll make a decision while in that session. Uh, and coming out of that, the board will inform the families, uh, of the decision of the board. Now formally, the, the family will get a letter from the board. Informally, I would say, uh, the option is there for the family to get a phone call this evening, uh, after the board hearing is over. Um, I'm assuming we have contact information, um, uh, to make that happen a little later. Does anybody have any particular questions about, uh, what this looks like?
And I did, um, I just wanna reiterate, I, um, I will, I'm gonna recuse myself just because we had had a conversation on the phone, um, about this and I, I really shouldn't be present in the deliberative session. So I will hear, I'll be here, but they'll do the deliberative session, uh, except that they can't. Cause Melissa's not here yet.
Well, she will potentially be here by then.
She will, yeah. How does that work?
Uh, you need the quorum to make a decision. Uh, if you're recusing, recusing yourself from a decision, then yeah, we need another board member.
Let me just text and see what time, um, Melissa will be here. Cause she, she will be here within moments. So, but that just occurred to me. Um, Melissa Walker, let's see.
I mean, if I have to go through that really long instruction thing again, I don't know.
All right. Yeah. Cause she needs to be able to hear everything. So we may just have to wait. She did say she would be here within 15 minutes of the start time, which is, yeah.
We're winding right into that.
I'm sorry.
Unless our son gets hungry.
Yeah. Yeah. Sorry. We just had a, we had had a conversation on the phone one day for not an insignificant amount of time. So like, it's not right. I'm gonna say to her, she texted, oh. She's gonna be a minute. I wonder if Claire can join via Zoom, but she is not. She's still a board member. Let me see.
Hey, Allison?
Yeah.
If, if the parents' presentation of the case has the same facts as what you learned in a phone call, would you still be potentially prejudiced by the previous phone call?
Probably not, I would imagine. I mean, I don't, I don't know. What, what's the, what's, what do you think about that?
So, I, I would say, um, there's some merit to that. Uh, was advice given during the phone call?
No.
So it, it's a board decision whether you should recuse or not. And the recusal standard, is, you know, sort of, uh, an appearance of, uh, being impartial. So I would say, uh, if you believe you can be impartial and the board members here believe you can be impartial, that you could stay.
Okay. Well, then that's your decision. I, I just wanna be as transparent and on the up and up as possible. We did have, um, a conversation, Nicole and I had a conversation and she advised me of what her situation was. And I told her of, just typically how we hear residency hearings, um, and what the process was. But I told her that I couldn't tell her what to do, even with regard to her driver's license. So that I guess is up to Devon and.
So actually, if that was the conversation, if it was, um, uh, you, uh, sort of informing the family of their options as what, what they had to do to, to make this happen?
No, no, it's more like just what the process.
And that's what I'm saying. I'm saying if it was sort of capped at that level, that's actually part of your, I'd say that's part of your job, uh, what you're doing. Uh, and that, and that you could hear the case from there.
Okay, that's why I'm not trying to make anything difficult. I just don't, I would really not wanna, I wanna err on the side of propriety, I guess. So, okay, that's cool. Then I guess we can move to Lorraine. If you guys are cool with that.
Yeah, yeah, I am. I think it's gonna make a difference. I'm first.
All right, go ahead, let me see.
Hi, first of all, nice to meet you. Um, I'm just going to read the letter that I drafted to, um, Bob, Superintendent Bob Teval, um, because I said it encompasses what I found and what I wanted to pass on to him for his, um, determination. So the letter is dated September the 29th, 2023. Um, dear Superintendent Teval, the town of Stratton is in receipt of a residency application for the family of Benjamin and Nicole Bartfeld. In review of the answers to present and future residency, it was noted that the Bartfeld family is, as of this date, living in a rental unit in Stratton. The rental contract in Stratton is through November the 15th, 2023. As of that date, the family will be relocating to Win Hall in a long-term rental unit. They are in the process of building a home in Win Hall where they will live full-time upon completion. The children will be attending school as Win Hall students. Based on this information, I am recommending a denial of Stratton residency. Although the family is presently living in Stratton through November the 15th, 2023, the intent is after that, is, is that after this date, they will relocate to Win Hall and become Win Hall residents. Please contact me with any questions you may have regarding this matter. I wanna say that, um, I work mostly with, um, Mrs. Teval, I mean, Mrs., um, Bartfeld, and she was, uh, forward with all information that I requested, um, as far as documentation, notes about, um, license appointments. Um, it was kind of like a, there were challenges that she faced and, um, so I wanna thank you for that. It made my part easier, but, um, that's the finding that I came to and I passed that on to, uh, the superintendent, um, in Townsend. So that's about it.
Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm okay. Can we turn it over to, I mean, any questions that I have, I think, could be answered by the family. So, are, Devon shaking her head, yes. Are you okay if I turn it over to the Bartfels?
Who are you asking?
You guys. Are you, are you good? Or do you have anything to say to add?
I don't have anything to add because I'm, I'm operating, I'm, I'm brand new with this, first of all, and I'm operating under the recommendation, um, of your residency expert.
There we go.
Um, I guess there's a few things to go through, I guess, that I prepared and, um, uh, is, how detailed should I go with this? About 10, 15 minutes or what's typical? I'm not really sure.
Well, could you give us the setup of like, when you moved here? Like, could you give us that spiel? Like, what your plan is, how it works? Timeline, yes.
Okay. Right. And that's my zero document here. Everything labeled. Um, okay, so, um, so we, we, uh, we're, we relocated here from Northern Vermont in, um, uh, this year, basically. Okay. And, um, the plans had started for this, um, last year when we decided we wanted to move down. And you can imagine this has been a bit of a, a challenging time to find a place to live. Um, so one thing I'll walk through here is some of the challenges we went through. And so what we thought might be an easier process to, to move here has become a little bit of a challenge. Um, you're including this in, I'm not, I'm just making a statement, including situations like this. You know, it's been, uh, an interesting path that we've had to take. So, um, uh, so it was, um, so when we first came here, we were coming down from Northern Vermont down to here, looking for a place to live. We ended up actually finding a place. Even though it's a very tight market, we found a place early on. It was a place that no one else seemed to want. We called it the lake house because it, it was a manufactured home, but no one else wanted it. So it's like, great. Um, and then actually ended up falling through because the, um, the subject was bad. Okay. But that took, that was weeks and weeks of process. That was in, uh, April 1st of this year. Okay, that we came down to start looking. Um, and you can imagine we were looking online too at first. Time passed. A lot of the properties were just above our price range. Um, so we kept looking. We ended up, um, seeing some land because there didn't seem to be anything else in our price range. And we found, um, uh, we found that. But that would be a challenge just in terms of where we actually gonna live, because then we realized how hard it was to even build and find builders. So that was a challenge too. So, um, as time passed and we were getting really worried, what are we gonna even do for schooling? Cause, um, um, but what I'm not going into great details, that many times we came from, uh, East Burke where we were living, down here looking for places to live. And so going back and forth, stressing out about all this, we're getting closer and closer to the school year too. What are we gonna do for the kids? Um, and this is the area you want to be. This is where we lose some people. Um, we ended up having this opportunity, um, that, um, I stopped in the Stratton rentals and I talked to them. I'm like, we need a place. And, um, they ended up finding the condo that we're now living in, um, right at this current time. Um, we looked into actually living there for the, for the full year, which was, we were priced out of. Okay. Because during the year, um, they wanted cash upfront and everything else and I couldn't do that. So I just said, I'm gonna take this and then we'll figure out what we're gonna do as time went on. Um, so in that, during that time, we were constantly going to friends in the area. Um, our kids started school. So both of our kids are in the school system here. Um, you know, from the, from day one till, till now, they're still in school. So they're, um, here at, uh, at the mountain school and, and at SMS. Um, so, uh, um, one thing I just wanted to say is that, so we did end up finding some land, um, and we actually ended up closing on that land. But part of that, um, and that is in Win Hall. Okay. But we don't know when we'll actually, we haven't started building yet. So I just wanna clarify, um, because, um, basically we're priced out because of the, of the interest rates now. And I was gonna do a VA loan and that in its own right is a very expensive option. So I figured I get the land. So long-term, we could figure out what we can do. But as of right now, um, we haven't done anything with it. And I don't know when we're gonna do anything with it. So meanwhile, we actually did find, um, in this whole process, there was another condo that we actually had found that we put in an offer in. This was a number of months back and that was, um, which one was that? Um, oh, the, oh, the, that's, okay. Um, so that was in August. And then we actually did find, um, a rental. It's like down the road from here, actually. Um, on Plimpton Road. And then we're like, okay, this is great. It's perfect. You know, we could stay there for years or something and we're really happy with that.
We overbid.
And, uh, yes, it is a rental and we actually put in extra for it. And, uh, and then it turns out that someone else had dibs on it. And so we didn't get that. Um, then that's while we are here in Stratton at Mountain Watch, you know, trying to find a permanent si- situation.
Can I just ask one question? When is it that you moved into the town of Stratton? What was that date?
Um, August 15th.
But, oh, okay. Yeah. August of, okay.
The lease started August 7th.
Okay. That, that thing.
I don't have that date here, actually.
And our lease.
Oh, we signed the lease on August 3rd.
Yeah, and our lease up in East Burke ended August 15th. So it overlapped.
Okay. All right. So you came here on August 15th. Okay. Sorry. Continue.
Yeah. Uh, so I guess one of the picture that I wanna paint is even, even in a way to this day now, we, we, we only signed a finally found, um, a more permanent rental, okay, that we can have now for, we don't know for how long. And that is in Win Hall, but we only signed that yesterday, wasn't it?
We signed it on the 29th.
Okay. So it's, um, so we only basically just realized where we're actually gonna live. We didn't know until, um, that came along. Um,
Cause it was a long process for that too. The application, getting approved again.
Well, and they, and they're finishing the rental as we speak and we were, we locked out, we've been fighting that. So had we not found that, honestly, I don't know what we'd be doing right now, but I wouldn't worry about that.
An attempt by the, by, by Groupon.
Yeah.
Um, just for clarification. So you moved into the place that you're currently renting on August 15th. Now you've signed to purchase or rent a condo in Win Hall.
We're, we're renting.
You're renting, you have the property in Win Hall, but that's its own thing.
But I can't do anything right now. Just I'm priced out until I know what we're doing.
And the place that you're renting now, when, what are the dates, the effective dates of that lease?
November 1st through, um, August.
Yeah, through August, but we can renew there. So.
Of, okay, of 23, of 24, August of 24.
Yeah.
And where are you as of like, well, I know it's today is your, but are you there yet or will you be there?
They're not even done.
They're still.
They're still working on it?
Yep.
Okay. And when is your lease up here in Stratton? The 15, okay.
Of November, yeah.
Of November. So do you anticipate being over there by the 15th?
Um, I hope so. Otherwise we don't have anywhere to go. So, yes.
Or be getting that touch.
Okay, okay.
Well, we have lands. We could live in 10th on the land. None of you work for, okay. So yeah, I don't know if Win Hall would want us to live in a 10th on the land. Um, I, I mean, I'm joking a little, but it's, I, I'm, I'm laughing a little with stress underneath right now, just because it's been quite a process. So we're not downing out or anything like that. But I guess the other thing I wanna emphasize is the following is this is our own residence. We don't own anything anywhere else. Well, we have this land that I told you about. Okay. Um, but we lucked out on that by meeting some locals and it wasn't even for sale. And so we got it for a good rate, cause no one else wants it because the subject from it is a nightmare. Okay. But I kind of needed to think down the line. I guess the point is we don't own any other homes anywhere. We don't own any other properties anywhere. This is where we live. We moved from Northern Vermont to here and now it's like, this is our, um, you know, take the words of, 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 you know, I guess, I don't know if it's the legal term, but domicile. This is our domicile. You know, there's no other where, no other places we, we live. So, um, I guess that maybe takes me to some other points that I just, I don't know. Should I bring those up or should I open the questions?
Yeah. You just had, like, I, I was, where's all your stuff?
In storage and, um, vending, well, it's not vending, it's New York.
Okay. Okay. Out of curiosity.
Because it's a lot cheaper there than, than it was in Manchester. And it's a new facility and there's no mice. So.
Okay. And your kids have started school then at the mountain school and at SMS?
Correct.
And did you go to Win Hall? Did you ask them for tuition? You did. And what was the result there?
We have it as of today.
Oh, you have, uh.
Because we signed our lease actually starting on the first. So they said they'll actually cover us starting, I guess, today is it?
Yeah, November 1st.
So you're looking for the gap between August to November 1st to be covered. Okay. All right.
And that's, we, but I, I, I wanna emphasize, we didn't know as of a week ago, like, we only signed this lease now and the way things have gone here. If that would have fallen through, cause they said they found something bad, cause they're literally fixing it up for us. Then who knows? Maybe I would have talked to people who I've met just around Mountain Watch and begged and pleaded to, um, say, you know, can we have a more reasonable rate for the year? So we might have ended up here. Now we know we're gonna be there. Trying to, you know, be responsible and make sure that we could cover everything. You know, Nicole took care of the documentation. So we could be there. You know, assuming that we're there in, um, in a few weeks, I guess. So.
Well, I have a question.
Yeah.
I, I, it came back to me about, um, New Jersey, your mother-in-law, your mother? And you were living, you worked down, you worked in New Jersey. Uh, I'm just, I'm just, it's with September.
No, I've been talking to your ex.
Coming back to mind about, it's now November. I mean, in the time in between, I'm saying, it's not about New Jersey. And that's why I wanted to look in the file.
Originally, we lived in New Jersey and, uh, no, I'm just smiling, cause it's a, it's, it's, I, I have a story for everything, unfortunately. Um, and, um, in my line of work, I guess I just, there wasn't anything up here. I looked in Northern Vermont when we were there. And here it's not exactly, um, an area where I can get work either. And so I just, um, uh, I only have to be in the office two to three, two to three days a week. Nicole's mom actually lives in New Jersey. And so I work in New Jersey. So I do stay with her, uh, two to three nights a week, most weeks, although here some, sometimes I'm here actually weeks in a row, if I can. So I do travel back and forth on a different basis. And normally I'd be there today and I actually drove back last night. So I went to work for one day, came back here for this hearing. And I'm not trying to, it's not, I'm just making the point that this is where we are. I wanna be with the family, but I need to make it work. So that's where my job is. So I go down.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And do you, do you live, do you work, Nicole?
I am from, I'm looking for work. So if anyone has any leads.
She was homeschooling before. So.
For two years when we were up there. It's, uh, so.
Okay.
Now that both are successfully in school, I need to. And it hasn't been easy.
And yeah, and, I mean, that's one aspect. We're happy with the schools here. And so that's why it's like, it's worked out well that she doesn't have homeschool anymore. So now she can work and hopefully make things easier. So.
Do you have any questions in TV land, Bob? Or, uh, Attorney McDermott? Do you have any questions? No, this is, this is a strange one. Like a, whoa.
I, I will say when we signed the lease here, then, uh, the person who we went to said, you know, no one's ever asked to live here until November 15th before. Cause, you know, cause again, if we stayed here longer, then I would have spent, I think it was $55,000 that they wanted upfront for, for the winter. So. Yeah.
So I guess my only, my only question would be to the board that, that everybody's clear on what's being asked.
Yes.
And I'm sure, uh, we probably have the, so Win Hall picked it up as of November 1st, you said. And that's because you signed the lease. Okay.
I tried before and they said as, as you have to be living in the town to get covered.
Okay.
Cause I tried.
Do you have a copy of that or was that provided at any point? Um, the, do, were you given a letter or something to that effect?
I just got a response in an email.
This just happened.
Yeah, it was, it happened on Monday.
Happy to give it to you.
Yeah. I mean, I think our treasurer would need that for verification. If it's being considered, she would probably need to see, you know, all aspects of it.
Yeah. As soon as I signed, as, as soon as we signed the lease on Sunday, I sent it out Monday morning. We cut it to November. So we got the okay immediately.
Okay.
From Celeste.
So I would just need, um, a motion from someone to move into exec, uh, into deliberative session.
Should I make a few other points or not?
If they, if you think that they're relevant and you want us to hear them, absolutely. This is your time.
Yeah. I mean, I guess, um, with, with all due respect, I guess, um, I, I, I was just looking into exactly, I guess, all this has surprised me a little bit. And I understand, um, I mean, you can imagine, we understand there are people in this area who live elsewhere during the year and so will come here during the winter months. And it's like, you know, hey, okay, can we get money? Because our kids are here. It, it, we're obviously different from that situation where it's not like we have another home somewhere else and we're coming here. It's, it's more of the, of this is our situation where we don't know where we can live, but we know where our kids are at school. They've been in school. Okay. And yes, and they've been very happy there. So it, just strictly in terms of schooling and in terms of the laws, from my understanding, everything seems to be based in, um, um, when I was doing my research, it, it's actually not a right to go to school. Okay. I realized it was actually that if, um, if schools are provided in an area that it's, um, all the kids have equal rights to go to school, um, regardless of whether the residents of the area know, um, or not. Okay. And it, uh, so you're interested. So I'm just making, um, the reason I was thinking about this is because I saw the word resident and I looked up the word domicile and, and trying to understand all this. And according to everything I understood, um, the right to education, if it's offered in an area, is something that tends to be offered fairly to all kids. And, um, regardless of actually whether technically you're a resident or not. Now we're residents of Vermont. And right now we're residents here. And actually had we, had we, had we been able to sign the, uh, the rental agreement with the place near here, then we're actually, we'd be residents, um, still in the future here, actually, is what would have happened. Um, but, um, in terms of domicile, I guess, as I understood it, it has to do with, um, where you go to. I don't have anywhere else to go to. When, you know, we're all here right now. I think right now we're sitting here, but the place that we domicile and our kids domicile. And even if I'm staying at my mother-in-law's, my intent is to come back to my family here. So it's not like there's anywhere else we're looking for. And just because we happen to be here for a period of time, and I understand it's unusual. Okay. Um, we didn't know till recently it would be a short period of time, I guess. I, and if I had a lot of money, I wouldn't care. I'd just be like, you know, whatever, $5,000 or whatever it's turning out to be, or I guess sometimes two kids, right? It, um, not worry about it. I don't feel like dealing with it, but I'm not in that boat. And so that's why we're here. I guess I could go into more, I prepared more background just to really understand it, but I, I guess I don't wanna belabor points, which I can, which I sometimes do. So, anyway.
Sorry, this is another one of our board. No, no, no. She's, she was working. Um, this is Melissa. These are the Bartfels. And I think they've pretty much just gotten done with their testimony for the most part.
I'll just listen.
Yeah, you can even hit the next one. I guess. Um, and so it is your mother-in-law's house down in New Jersey.
She rents.
The, the, right. Yeah. And that's where you stay when you're working.
Correct.
Okay. Is there any other question?
And, and we've been paying taxes here in Vermont for, you know, what, two years now and, um, we're renting here. So effectively, you know, our landlord, I suppose, is paying taxes in the area. So in the sense that we are taxpayers for a period of time, we are taxpayers. I don't know. I don't know. I guess you're a lawyer, so I'm not sure. What that means. But when I, I know when I do our taxes, then the year, if it has to reflect as Stratton for a period of time and Win Hall for a period of time, not knowing, I have a, I have someone do it for me, cause it's too complicated. But, um, you know, effectively then we're paying taxes now through our landlord. So it's like, in that sense, we're contributing to what I thought was our kids' education for the period of time we're here. So.
Um, I'm all set. Um, I, I just need a motion to move into executive session. And then what we'll do, I'm gonna take Bob and Mark on the road and we're gonna go down to Kent's office and it'll be, um, Devon, myself, Kelly will go down, we'll kick Allison off. And if, when we come back, if you can just text her and tell her to come back to the meeting.
All right.
On the right and it's lovely.
I'll call the meeting back to order then at 6:07 PM. Um, we have reached a decision with regard to that and we will, um, you can come have a seat if you'd like. Um, and we will, uh, we will, a letter will be forthcoming, but I'll, I'll call you guys tonight. So thank you very much. I appreciate it. Nice meeting you all. Yes, I would like to plug this back in. Okay. Mr. Ivanov? Hi, perfect timing. Okay. Let me do this. Can you text Allison and tell her if she wants to rejoin?
She, yeah.
Have a good night.
Um, okay. Sorry. All right. So, okay, sorry. We had another residency hearing before yours. So that's, we're just finishing up with that. Um, I'll go through, so I'm Allison. I emailed back and forth with you a little bit to say hello. Um, oh, let me let this person back in. So this is a public meeting. We do have people here in TV land. Um, but just so you're aware, this is Melissa Walker. She's a board member. This is Lorraine Weeks Newell. She's our residency coordinator. Candy Bernard, town lister, uh, Devon. Candy Bernard, town lister, uh Devin Marcucci, a board member, Kelly Delealaskin, a board member, and on here we have Allison Peterson, who is our town treasurer, we have our superintendent, he's right there, that's Bob uh Tebow, and then our uh town attorney, our school board attorney for the evening, he helps us with these meetings, um that is Mark. Oh, sorry. Sorry, um and so basically what'll happen is um Attorney McDermott will lead us in, he'll give us an explanation. Sorry, this is like whirlwind for you, you just showed up, and I'm like, let's go, um, he will give us like the rundown of how the meeting goes. And then um we'll, we will proceed from there, so he'll just explain to you, if you have any questions on process, he can clear that up, and then we'll go into our session.
All right.
So I'm gonna turn this, so this is uh Mr. Ivanov, I'm gonna turn this over to you, um miss uh, well, Mark.
I didn't yell at anybody, I want that to be clear. Uh, my name's Mark McDermott, I'm an attorney, I'm helping the board uh with their hearings this evening, just wanna explain the process really quick. Uh, it's quasi judicial, so it looks like a hearing. Um, the administration, Bob and Lorraine, will explain how they came to their decision, they'll share their decision with you and the board. Um, and then uh with relevant facts. Uh, the board will then have a chance to ask them questions to clarify any issues that might have come up. Uh, and then you'll have a chance to present your side of the issue, and then the board will then once again be able to ask questions of you uh to clear up any issues that might come up. Uh, at the end of that sort of hearing space, uh the board chair will bring the board into deliberative session, which is executive session. They'll be by themselves in another room, uh they'll come to a decision um based on the hearing uh and facts that come out tonight. Um, and at the end of that, formally, you will get a letter in the mail um that announces the decision, however um uh we can give you a phone call tonight uh after the hearing, uh you know, just leave a phone number with the board chair before you leave. Um, you know, it seems unfair that the US Mail is the way you have to learn things three days later. Um, but that's the uh, that's the gist, so if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Well, I I think I'm clear on the procedure, yes, and looking forward to getting my chance to speak.
Uh, so turn it over to Lorraine, is that okay?
Okay, um I'm not sure of the pronunciation of your wife's name, it's Yana?
Yana.
Yana, I'll just refer to her as Yana. Okay, um I'm going to just uh read the letter that I drafted to Superintendent Robert T. Ball um regarding my review of the application for residency. Um, Superintendent T. Ball, attached is the residency application for Evangie Ivanov and Yana. The application is complete, save the DMV Vermont driver's license and registration. Mr. Ivanov included a note stating that he has an appointment at the DMV on nine twenty-six twenty-three. Although the parents have provided the required documents, I believe that there is no intent to consider Stratton as their primary home. In the mother's portion of the application, she states that she will continue to reside in Lexington, Massachusetts, spending time between Massachusetts and Vermont. In addition, they have a younger son, age thirteen, living with his mother, who was attending school in Massachusetts and who was attending school in Massachusetts. I contacted Mr. Ivanov to ask about his younger son and if he will be attending school in Stratton. He stated that it is not likely and that he will not be doing so. Uh, Mrs. Ivan, um Mrs. Ivanov's answer for number twenty-nine of the application states that it is her, her and their hope to eventually retire in Stratton. As she also stated that homeownership has brought them here. As it is the policy to provide, um as it is the policy to provide a tuition waiver to school-aged students residing in Stratton, Vermont, it is not the policy to pay for tuition based on intent to become a resident in the future. Please review the attached information and contact me if you have any questions, and that was dated September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Um, like last time, do you, do you have any questions for Lorraine right now, or do you wanna wait to hear Mr. Ivanov?
I have no additional questions.
Okay, so we'll turn it over to Mr. Ivanov and then ask questions from there? Okay, so what we have asked for on the, if you could just start off maybe with a timeline, when you moved here, give us the dates, things like that, and then you can proceed with you uh your information.
Uh, yes, sure, so I will start a little bit earlier with the background before moving here, so um, I am in the US for ten years now, and um I taught my kids to how to ski, and my older son beca- became like very interested in skiing. And two years ago, he um took her winter term at Stratton Mountain School when he was a bo- boarding student. At that time, so at this point, uh she was like really excited about his life here in Vermont. Uh, and so at this point, we went forwards from like maybe fantasizing of living in Vermont, which I had before even coming here, because uh my famous compatriot Alexander Solzhenitsyn found a refuge here, so when he was like exiled from the USSR, so I already knew something about the state, uh but it really became a reality that at some moment, we need, we will need to move here. And next year again, he uh attended Stratton Mountain School for a winter term. And then it was our decision to um move here and enroll him for uh for the whole year, for for the full-time, uh as a full-time student at with Stratton Mountain School.
Is he a freshman this year?
Yes. Um, so speaking about the concrete dates, um we closed the the deal for our place on um June first of this year. Um, and we just did some works around the condo before moving in. And I moved here full-time on September first, so when the school year started, when everything was ready for for Ivan and myself to move in. Um, yeah, and so I started collecting documents and doing all paperwork uh required for uh residency application.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Can we ask you questions now?
Absolutely, yeah.
Um, my, I just a little bit more information, um. What do you do for work?
Um, so I'm a data scientist and data engineer, so I work remotely. And yeah, that was another epic coincidence that finally I was able to work fully, fully remote.
Okay, so before, so before, when you couldn't work fully remote, where is your job located?
Um, so my job is like, uh, is located, my office is located in Massachusetts. But uh since COVID, I don't need to go there anymore.
Oh, you don't need to go there at all? Okay, and your uh wife and your other child currently resi- reside in your, was it, would would you call the la- the house where they are, how would you describe that house, is that, was that your previous primary residence? Was that their, is that their current primary resi- explain that?
So this is their primary residence, this was my former primary residence before I moved here. So, yeah, they they live there.
And they live there, and they're there full-time?
Uh, so my wife, Yana, she's uh coming here every weekend. And she's, sometimes she's staying here during the weekdays. But for the most time, she's back in Mass.
If she comes here during the week, where's your other child?
Uh, so sometimes he's staying with the, his friends, sometimes he's like, uh that, sometimes I go there for a few days, but it was like, so we just started doing this. I've been there maybe a couple times for a few days in Massachusetts for the past few months.
Had you ever rented a home or um been up here prior, spent time in Stratton prior to your son attending SMS?
Uh, we were in Vermont several times, but this was mostly in northern Vermont, in Craftsbury. So we were like staying every winter in Craftsbury for like a week or so during school vacation. Um. Yeah, I think maybe just day visits for different races. There were some B K L festivals, this is, this is like uh Dillco uh Ski League for kids. They do these festivals, and there were a couple of them in Vermont, for example, in Rapid Nordic Center. So we stayed there for a few days for this festival, and yeah, that was before, before he started going to school.
Okay, and does your wife work in Lexington or in Massachusetts?
Yeah.
Is she at home, or is she, does she have a physical job?
So she's hy- in hybrid mode, so sometimes she needs to go to the office, sometimes she can work from home.
And your younger child is in what grade?
He's in seventh grade.
Seventh grade, and where will he attend high school?
Uh, so that's on the pier, but uh most likely he will attend school in Massachusetts.
Um, okay. Somebody else have some questions? Because I can go, I mean, I have, I can go, I can go, keep going. You're good, um. Where are all your family personal belongings? That's one question that we have, they have asked us to ask in these hearings before, is where, where are your family photo albums, where's your, you know, if your wife had a wedding dress, where is that, where is your, if you, you know, where are your holiday decorations? Where are those stored?
Well, so my relations with personal belongings is like, really interesting, because I've been moving so many times, so I kind of have very few of them that I kind of stick to. Um. So, some of my photos, including those I brought from Russia, from Russia, currently here in Stratton. So my sports equipment, like my favorite gravel bike is here, and I'm taking my skis from Lexington here pretty soon, because it's starting to snow. Um, yeah, so. What else, I don't, I mean, others like have purely utilitarian value, other things we have. I don't know, winter tires, so I will, they're in garage in Lexington, but I will put them on my car next week, maybe.
Okay, so would it be fair to say that some of your personal items are here and some of them are in Lexington?
Yes, and I'm moving them here, in the process of moving them here.
What about your wife's personal stuff?
So my wife's personal stuff. I just, yeah, trying to think, some personal documents, ideas, sure, they are there. Close to her at her hands, I am. Nowadays, we keep most photos digitally, and but I would say that the bulk of uh paper photos are here, and that's a coincidence, maybe, I was going to just go through them, review them, and together when I have time, um, but that's what it is. Yeah, and her bike is here.
And you said you put, you closed here on June first of this year, how long have you owned your home in Lexington?
I think we bought it two thousand, May, in May, May first, two thousand sixteen, May fifth, two thousand sixteen.
And is it currently now, or has it ever been on the market to be sold?
Um. By us? No.
Okay.
Um, the residency here that you closed in then, on, in June, um, that's a condo?
Yes.
Um, how many bedrooms?
Three bedrooms.
And how many rooms in your uh, the Lexington home?
Uh, also three bedrooms.
You have a garage down there, you said, do you have a garage here?
No.
Getting a feel for sort of this layout, I guess, um. Anything pounding or burning? Uh, Devon.
Um, so just to be clear, we're just looking for tuition for your son, that's currently living here, like, that's it? Your son's that, who's living here with you, that's the only child we're looking for tuition for? Not your son, who's also in Massachusetts, right? Because he's not a resident here.
So my son, my younger son is not a resident here.
Okay, just confirming that.
That you're looking for tuition to SMS?
Just for your one child.
So my older son is a student at SMS.
Yeah.
And I believe that uh my youngest son, uh it doesn't apply to my youngest son.
Yeah, okay, okay.
And just out of, out of complete courtesy, I mean, I think you've done great, but I just wanna make sure that um language you have heard and understood all the questions this evening, you feel confident that you've understood what we've discussed, I just don't, I wanna be sensitive to you know, different languages.
Yeah, um, yeah, I feel confident that I understood everything.
Okay, I wish I could speak two languages, I cannot. Yeah, so um uh Mark, do you have anything else, or can we um entertain a motion to move into deliberative session?
I uh I just, uh Lorraine had mentioned that uh a driver's license was being applied for or coming, and I just uh wondering what the status was about.
I have it with me.
Oh, very good, we can get it.
Permanent one.
We can get a copy, we'll take a copy of that, and um can I get your phone, because what we'll do, like we had mentioned earlier, is we'll move into deliberative session, and at that point, you're free to leave, we won't have any further questions for you. And then I can give you a phone call tonight and um advise you of our decision, and then you'll also be given a letter.
So, uh, just a second.
Yeah.
So we are close to this moment where we are, when you are going to.
Yeah, if you have more to say, you certainly can.
Yep, so I'll give you my phone number, yeah, yeah, I would like to add something to that, uh three three nine two two seven nine three zero four.
Correct.
I have one question.
Yeah.
Um, what about the vehicle that you have here, do you have Vermont registration?
Yes.
I don't have a copy of that in here.
So I have a temporary copy, I did not receive father, a permanent one yet.
Temporary.
But you can see my car from the window, it says green plates already. And I think I attached my co- a copy of my temporary registration to my appeal letter.
Oh.
And I sent it in mail, both in mail and by email to Allison.
Um, I, I did put that email, I saved it, but I did not read your email, just because I need to remain impartial. So I I do have it, I don't, I can't confirm what was in there, because I did read it.
But I have also sent a paper mail.
Okay.
So I believe.
I can grab a copy of the license if you want.
Which side is it on, the left standing? That side, I did it. All right, so I can, um. Thank you, kid, uh all right, so I would need a motion. Motion to move to deliberative.
Deliberative.
Oh, I'm so sorry, excuse me, we're, that was on the floor, um, how do, how do we handle that? Yeah, we don't, yeah, okay, I guess, I I'm not sure.
So just want to ask a
There's no seconds.
Quick question, just to be fully clear on that. So I provided, uh I think I fulfilled all the formal requirements for the application. Or is anything missing, or you consider anything missing?
Um, what I have here, I don't have just a copy of your temporary registration, it's the only thing I don't have in here, I have the birth certificate, I mean, I have the um, this passport you provided, and I have your loan activity, this copy of your rights since now, I have a tax statement on your condo. Um, and that sounds like we have a copy of that. And there's also the mailing of the, on your checks from um the bank, UPS. Forty-three High Point.
So do we need to? So do we need to do something to acquire this copy? I can go to the car and bring it. Actually, that might be the easiest way.
Yeah, we, yeah, we can do, we can do that when we go into session, you can then grab a copy of it.
Yes, so, I mean, besides this, if we are good on the required documents, it is more about discussion about the intention rather than the formal requirements.
Sure.
Yeah, so and as it was said in the very beginning, the concern was that we just have a my my wife and I, we just have an intention, but we are not really doing anything to reside here. Was that the?
To permanently reside here.
Permanently reside here.
Correct? Is that the right language?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
I have another question. What will you do in the summer when school is out? Will you stay up here for the summer or do primarily?
I mean, they have a training program for Nordics that goes through the summer. So somebody would need to stay, my son, and that would likely be me. And it's nice to be here in summer.
How will this house be treated when your son graduates?
This one?
Yeah.
I think that would be our like. I mean, as soon as my wife can move here, she will be, she will, we will join living with it. But I'm planning to be here, to live here. And even if I change my job, uh, I would be only looking for a remote option now.
Okay.
It's a very nice place.
Did you, could we kind of started asking questions? I'm sorry. You had something else to say, sir?
Yeah, so is there, is there anything else I can say now to kind of support my case or redeem your concerns or?
I think I, I think I'm, yeah. Motion to, do you have anything else that you? Do you want to say?
Yes, I'm good. Uh, yes, and about the registration, just let me know when you come back.
Yeah, if you can grab that while we head in, that'd be great. But, um, the so Kelly had motioned previously, but it wasn't seconded, so it died on the floor. So we need another motion.
Motion to move to. Why do we keep deliberative?
It's deliberative. Yeah. Kelly motion, Devon, second. But what I'm gonna do this time, oh, I admit. I'm gonna add her. And then let me see, Margaret's coming in right now, but, um, I have to kick her out. If she's on here. Margaret, I don't know if you're there, but we're just about to move into deliberative session. So we actually need to kick you off.
Okay, that's fine. I, that's fine. That's fine. I'm out of here. Thank you, guys.
Okay, thanks for coming, though.
Okay, bye.
They're all.
We'll move out of deliberative. What is six forty-one? So these went pretty quickly. We. So, okay. There's there are two different types of sessions. Those are two different types of sessions. All right, so we called it six forty-one. And so I think, I think we have concluded at this point, our meeting, our two residency hearings. At this point, I don't think there's anything else at this point that we are required to do. Mark, is that correct?
No, you're in a good place.
We're in a good place. Okay, Bob has his directions. We're all good. I'm just waiting for the motion.
So actually, hold on, sorry.
Oh, wait, stop.
Directions on the first one, I'm waiting for an email from you to confirm that the other school is covering it. And then, you know, partial.
Yep.
Okay, but you're gonna send me something before I do that.
Yeah, I actually think she just sent it to me so I can send it over to you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so he's got his marching orders and we are good. I need a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Nice.
Thank you, Kelly. Thank you, Melissa. Everybody's good. Thank you, Mark. It was nice to meet you.